Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here tonight for the March 3 committee meeting. I now call this meeting to order. We begin this evening with some presentations. First up, we have the Davia. And we are glad to welcome Dan Sacala to give us a presentation.
Okay. Good evening. Hi. My name is Dan Sacala. I am the principal of the Davia. First of all, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and be of service to you. And we hope we have an excellent process and construction journey together. We, let's see, I started, I grew up in New York City and doing general construction, just to give you a little background, like doing super high-end work in New York City, like Plaza Hotel, Federal Reserve Bank, the Trump Organization, that kind of work. And then I went to school at NYU when they ran a construction management program. My wife and I decided to, actually, then I went to law school and became a construction litigator and litigated full-time for a while in New York City. That was kind of the background. My wife and I, I went to Geysburg College initially, decided to move out here to raise our boys. So I kind of live on the northern end of Lower Tension right now, just a little below you. Got into construction management and doing store work as a fluke. I was, I was working in New York City finishing up a project as an owners representative on a really large nursing home project. There was a problem in Warwick at the Kissel Hill Elementary School project. They were, I got there coincidentally, got a chance to meet the business manager, met him for coffee, threw a letter on the desk on the table when we had breakfast. And the project was a letter written to the architect by the four front contractors. The project was 11 months behind schedule and the contractors wanted $800,000 to finish on time. And I was asked, you know, can you do anything about it? And that was in 2003. We wound up finishing on time and it cost like $15,000. And fast forward 16-plus years later, we've kind of completed 1.8 billion, a little bit more than 1.8 billion in K-12 work alone in Pennsylvania. Our geographic range is pretty much the New York State border and our own board, York County and everything east of there. So that's all been kind of where we're at by reference. It's been a lot of fun. I kind of like construction, kind of like problems. And it's a lot better being on this side than having happy experiences and picking up the pieces of litigation. So, in any event, to your project, so we, as you know, you did a feasibility, a district-wide feasibility study in 2018 to assess the four elementarys and middle school, high school. And, you know, where do you go from there? Feasibility study identified a lot of work that needed to be done in pretty much all the buildings. A lot of it was facility, excuse me, system, system-based for the most part, mechanical systems. And what is the best thing to do, the right process moving forward to address, you know, a 100-page facility study? And it's the best use of taxpayer money. That's an inclusive process that includes the community. So at the end of the day, you've got projects that both satisfy all the needs you have, are inclusive with all the needs of all the stakeholders in the district, and marries with the budget, the funds that you have. So you, by law, you could have just hired an architect. You could have just ran with the feasibility study you had, hired an architect. You don't have to go out to competitively bid architectural services or professional services. But the decision was made to come up with a competitive process and not just have a competitive process and just hit the ground running, but to take a step back and start with a small feasibility phase over the course of several months where you take your study, you vet it, shoot a lot of holes through it, basically evaluate it in great detail, communicate that with both the administration, that's a process with the administration, vet it through the community, and then let that short-term process, which won't cost you much, and certainly not much in the scheme of things, let that process drive the options. So that what you have at the end of that, you know, two, three, four-month process is, are options that make the most sense for the district, that satisfies all the needs that you have. So when you roll those options out and make those decisions on what to roll forward on, they basically hit all the buttons on all the things you need. So that's what we did. And our collective effort was to bring in and build excitement for Northern Lebanon with basically the best architects out there in the marketplace. And that's what you, you got to compete. An RFP was created, was disseminated, you had submissions from eight firms, who I will say, without exception, are the best firms that there are in the marketplace. And we reviewed that with the administration in detail. And I saw a piece of paper, I had a, we just basically came up with a grading system to take the eight down to four. The four were recently interviewed. And out of the four, there were basically two that kind of rose to the top as being the two best choices, all things considered. And just to complete the process, so the idea would be, you'd retain a firm or two firms, depending on your desires. And there's pros and cons to retaining one or two. And of course, we can talk about that. But you go through this feasibility process. That process would be, again, as I said, not to be redundant, but it would get you to the point that here are the best options for the district based on all things considered. And then you have the option of moving forward at that point with a firm. What we've also done, just to connect all the dots in this feasibility RFP, we included the cost that the successful firm would charge in the big design phase, which is where the lion's share of the cost is. Not to, you know, every dollar counts, but again, order magnitude, paying, you know, order magnitude $10,000, $20,000 or less for a feasibility study, that's going to get you the very best decisions for the district, is worth its weight in gold. And additionally, that cost of the study is reimbursable by that same architectural firm, all of them wound up waiving the fees. So you're essentially getting the study for nothing as long as you award a project, not all the project, but a project in the end. And again, all the firms have already identified their fees at this point as well. So that's kind of the whole process in a nutshell. I can go into any more details you'd like. It's kind of as you see. Any questions or anything?
First of all, Dan, I want to thank you for your help through that process. I think you said some things that were critical to us. And that's the, one of those things is involvement of the community through this process and trying to then come up with in the end, based on that feasibility study in 2018, there's certainly some concerns and renovations and things that were recommended. And before we spend a lot of money on that, making sure that we have looked at all possibilities and included the community in those possibilities. So I want to thank you for your help. Thanks, I think, talking us through and getting us to this point has been, you've been a big help.
Well, I have to comment on your vision as well because having, you know, walked in a lot of circles, I can't tell you how many times you walk into a school district where there's an agenda and we're just basically told to go. And they don't have the, sort of the broad perspective to do this kind of a process, which really makes the most sense in the long run. So, you know.
So we as a board now are at a point where we have to decide to take a look at either one or two architects. And there's, like Dan said, there's some pluses and minuses to that. I'm going to kind of turn it over at this point to Rob and Mike and Barry, who are interview team. Show us every part of it, but didn't get to finish the day with us, for their comments and just to get some feedback from them.
Yeah, so I'll start, I guess. Yeah, number one, I think we did get a chance to look at four very good firms that came in. There was not a single one of them that was narrowed down from the eight. They couldn't do a project worth, whether that was, whether that ends up being some type of renovation, some addition. You know, there wasn't a one in that group that could not, could not do it. You know, I think, one other thing I want to make sure is clear, we did have that feasibility study from 18, but in this process, there will be a new feasibility study done to really understand what the, what the buildings are like today, what can be done with them, and what the future needs are. I think that needs refreshed as we're doing this. So these guys, all of them, again, could do that. We did narrow it down to two. Two that, and I think we have two on here because they were both very good when it came down to it. The four were good as a whole, but two were really, really good. And they were RLPS and Crabtree and Roarball. And, you know, I'll just go through some of what I saw as the highlights of each one. RLPS, very innovative designs, included security as well as education, really into the designs. You could tell how well thought out those designs were as they talked about it. Very collaborative process with the community as we talked about. We want to make sure that that is a part of this. So just as they talked through that, we saw that that is something they're very comfortable with doing. Engaging the community, getting feedback, understanding what they need. They have good experience on both renovations and additions. They weren't just, we want to go build a brand-new building. So I think as we go through the whole feasibility study, you know, there'll be eyes wide open. Good bench strength there as well. Now to Crabtree and Roarball, you know, again, both these firms are good in a lot of the key areas. Crabtree, Roarball, safety and security design focused, you know, all of them. And I really, I really liked on Crabtree's side, you know, the security was not just build a fortress, make sure people couldn't get in. They talked about how the design inside buildings, whether it's, again, a renovation or a final building, is designed to prevent, you know, things like bullying, those kind of things. So that, you know, teachers, administrators have clear, clear sight lines, those types of things. So well thought out. They are a value-focused, value-focused firm as well. And they don't, they didn't just say that, they backed it up with, every year since 1997, they have been awarded what they call the least, I might get this right, Dan made me remember, least cost award from the state of Pennsylvania, first square foot, least cost award, which is big. You know, that's, that's a big deal. We want a good product, but we want it at the best price. So, and that was not at, you know, their least cost was not, it was clear that it was not a chintzy product. It was a, it was a really good product. They've done a lot of projects here in central PA and Sussman Valley, you know, Cumberland Valley School District just completed some with them. So they're, they're also very involved with the community, their process as well, pulled in all of their ideas. The other piece, and as we went through these questions with the different firms, you know, sometimes we ask different questions. We may not have drawn something out of each one, but something on the Crabtree side, which I really liked, as they go through that feasibility study and designs, we will get to see not only what does this cost to build, but really the long-term operating cost, long-term maintenance cost, if we keep what we have, if we renovate. And that's really, I think that's the big, that's the big answer we need. What's, what's the best long-term design for us so that, you know, our money is well-spent? And, you know, we built big in 1957, you know, maybe we'll have another 40-plus years before we have to go back and look at this in a big way again. So, so that's my two cents on both of those guys. You know, if I had to lock in on one at this point, it would be Crabtree. You know, Dan, we talked through the process with you of, you know, could we put two of them together? Could we, could we look at having them both come into this process and draw out community? We all feel like if we could do that and do it really well, and make sure that all the firms got the same info so that when they went back and did their, did their work, that we get an apples-to-apples. If we feel comfortable that we can do that, then I think, you know, my recommendation would be to go with the two, to try to get them to compete in a way that we get a best product. That might be a difficult process, and I think that's something we've got to discuss a little bit to make sure, you know, we do the right thing.
Yeah, I would just reiterate, without being too repetitive, that the four firms that we had were top-notch. They were, they were excellent. But certainly the two that we've identified really, really stood out. There were certain things about each one of them, and I won't go into all the great details, but if I could break it down into, you know, maybe front end and back end, one firm really shown on the front end, one really showed on the back end of potential projects. This is just my perspective. And saying that is not to say that, you know, the one couldn't perform well in the other phase or vice versa, but the thing that was attractive to me about the possibility of having the two engaged at the same time was to let both shine and let us see where they are in terms of those two things. I have some of the same, you know, questions that Director Marlowe mentioned as far as how would we make that work? How would we have a feasibility study that engages the public well, that gets the input that we need, that doesn't confuse both the district and the public, but ends up with the best result for all of us? And I, when you get a chance, Dan, I'd love for you to maybe speak a little bit as to how you think that could happen, so that the whole board can hear that and what your impressions are of that. But two excellent, excellent firms. You know, at the end of the day, I think, well, so first of all, I'd say that, you know, the default way that this would be done would be for us to have just hired somebody and just gone with it and run with it. And I think we would have been fine if we had done that. But I, the approach that I think we decided to take was to do a little more due diligence. And that's what I see this as, is intense due diligence, to make sure that we're moving in the correct direction. That's not to say that we can't pick one and go, but I like the idea of more due diligence to make sure that we're getting the best value, the best product, the best public engagement, the best assessment of our needs and our requirements and moving forward from there. So that was my input. Again, the takeaway, these two just really, really stood out. And I think they're both worthy of consideration, either in tandem or separately.
Can I just say ditto? So I think they pretty much nailed what we all experienced in the interviews. And I as well think having two of them compete is a much better process. It's really tough to get to know somebody in an interview process. If you can't put, if you can't impress me for one hour, that doesn't impress me. And so by making them compete with each other, I think it gives us a broader look at the two companies to decide which one is truly best for the long term.
I think coming out of that, we did think that two would be the direction to go. You have since had some conversations, and I know there were some concerns, so could you share those?
Dan, you don't, you don't know me, like, my personal mentality is always, like, there's always a solution. You're simply willing to expend the time and energy, but the solution is there. I will tell you candidly, leaving the interviews, I threw out the idea of the two. And having done two in different circumstances before, I mean, I was comfortable with suggesting it. But I will likewise tell you, after speaking with both, they both communicated, A, a desire to obviously do the work for the district, but a reservation, and the reservation is really regarding this. You're hiring a leader, the design professional is a leader, they're going to, they're going to leave, they're familiar with the process, they're going to lead you through the charrette process where ideas are thrown around and concepts are discussed, and we try to distill needs and input into options. And both firms communicated, in essence, I'm not using my words, both firms communicated separately, obviously, that they both have different, no, each firm will have their own way of doing that, their own means and methods and leadership styles, and it would be cumbersome. I, I, I mean, just being candid, I think that was kind of the conclusion for both firms. Rather than, rather than continue to drive down and finding a solution to put the two together, they were both willing to roll the dice because in the end, and I agree after listening to them, the district will be served better in the end by hiring one leader to go through the process. So, as you know, coming out of the interviews, I was like, yeah, of course we can do this. Because again, we've done it twice. The difference, the difference in the other two times we did it, we didn't have the same level of community input in the other two times. The other two times were more a committee-based, one was a small committee, one was a larger committee, but it didn't involve the community interaction as well. So, unbalanced, that was the conclusion. Again, we'll roll it out any way you want, but that was the feedback.
So I understand their concerns in doing so, but would they decline being a part of the process if we still wanted to see feasibility studies from both?
No. No, in fact, I made that clear. When I said, hey, like, deal or no deal, is this your final answer? Like, it's either they pick one or you're out. No, that's not what we're saying, but it was worth recommending.
I had contractors that didn't want to give quotes if I was going somewhere else and want to quote, but in the long run, they all did the quotes as well.
Well, here you got the quotes. You have the quotes. So they competed against each other and made you, and each firm proposed and made to be processed concepts to consider as potential ideas. But it would be sort of like in your situation, hiring both contractors to work beside each other and complete the project on time and satisfying their needs.
Yeah, so I, some of the concerns they, they shared there, I think are the concerns we had as well as we stepped back. I think what I heard you say is, because their process is different, they feel like they may draw different things out of, out of the groups as they talk to them, and thus we may not get all the, all the same information driving a final design. That, that among other things. Yeah, again, it's like hiring two separate leaders to lead a process. Different leaders have different philosophies and style, had to get to an end goal, and it'd be the, again, my mentality is there's always a way. But you have to, we have to really go through a lot of effort to marry the two of them, which may require separate community, you know, like basically two tracks of meetings, like duplicative meetings, if that's the way you want to go. I can say without a doubt, I don't have any reservations on the two we got to. So if we land on one of those, we have a good partner, on either one of those.
So when I initially heard about the idea of having this competition between the two firms, I was really excited because I thought this would drive creativity, drive both firms to give us the best cost possible, and that in the end, we would come out with the best possible scenario. So when I, I was kind of foaming up enough to hear how the second part of the day went. And when I heard that, there was another firm that was just as good as the first firm we heard in the day. I thought that was the perfect world. But then when we heard about the concerns about getting that proper community engagement, then the best case scenario, or the best path seemed a little more gray. I think at this point, as a board, we really want to make sure that we can interact efficiently and clearly with the public, with all stakeholders, that we have clear communication with administration and with teachers and with the public, and that we are hearing that with one voice, one voice as the board and the firm and administration together. Whereas I think if we have two firms having separate conversations, that chatter could get mixed up. And although I love the idea of driving more creativity and getting more ideas and maybe even driving down costs, I think at this time at Northern Lebanon, we really need to create, to generate clear messages and clear communication coming from all directions. And so I loved the first firm that I heard on Friday, and when I heard the rest of the team saying there was another firm that was equally excellent, with a good track record, that seemed great to work with as well, I'm going to trust everybody that saw that firm. And, you know, I would go with either firm. From what I have gathered and what I heard and what I could see in the handout, it does sound like the second firm would be a good choice. My feeling is that it makes sense right now to make sure we have clear communication to move forward with one firm.
Everybody comfortable with that?
I don't really have additional discussion. I would just say, I certainly trust the team. I thank you guys for the time you spent. I know it was a tremendous amount of time that you gave to the day and to the process. And thank you for the interview process and fully engaging with those two groups. And I trust the decision of those that were part of that, part of that group.
I want to thank the people that were able to come last week to listen to this. And I think if I understand it correctly, Director Marlowe, and I forget your names, and Dan, I believe the competition has occurred, you said we did get these, so the competition as far as two firms...
And not just a few of good firms. You literally, you could not have added a ninth firm that would have not represented the best of the marketplace that's going on.
Because I think we can kind of be at ease knowing that the competition part occurred. We have gotten the, along with the best firms, they competed to give the best prices. So I think since the competition has happened, me personally, I just don't like a lot of cooks in the kitchen. I would be more comfortable going with one because it is hard when you have two very successful companies or leaders or coaches or teachers that both know their ways the best, and then when they have to try to work together and then involve the community like we want them to, I just think it can leave, you know, some muddy water. So since the competition has occurred, I would definitely be comfortable with going with one of them. Whatever the directors feel is the better company, I'll go with because I feel they've put in the time and I trust their opinions as well.
So for next meeting, the people that were on the interview team, Director Marlowe, Director Han, Director Tom, will need a recommendation for the board. We don't have to do it now, if you're comfortable doing it now, we can do that. We need a recommendation to put on the agenda for the board for next meeting, next week.
Yeah, I mean, I would make the recommendation at this point, we'd go with one as we've discussed it now. I would recommend Crabtree, Roarball for that for a couple of reasons that I may have talked to already, but certainly on the, on the value side, I think that they understand building kind of to a budget, kind of to what, to what a district can afford. They also show proof of being very involved at state level, going after grants and those types of things that certainly could help us, help us out as well. And, and the other piece that both firms did, did well, but I did not mention it about Crabtree, was the, on the community side, also designing in kind of community space within, within our schools, how there is, you know, how we kind of make space that both the community uses and the school uses, which I think is, is really important, especially in a rural setting like we have here, that this becomes kind of a hub for the community in a way that today does, does not function because it was designed, you know, 50 years ago, 50 plus. That's my recommendation.
So Dr. Messinger, I guess the only, as a point of order, I guess, are we looking tonight to decide that we will vote on the firm next week? Are we deciding tonight to go between two or one? That's, I guess, the question I have. Because I, I think there would be more benefit in discussion, whether that takes place tonight or next Tuesday's time with me. But I think there's an advantage, you know, where I saw weaknesses for one firm and strengths for the other. The good news is if we contract with them, we, we can make sure that they perform on those pieces that we think are weaknesses, and we can do that. So I'm more than comfortable moving forward with one. I think it may be useful to have some more discussion as to which one that might be. And that is it, it'll be next week. um, and that is that it could be next week.
Right, uh, if you'd like, we could, we should probably come forth with a recommendation for next week on this meeting, uh, as a committee as a whole, but we can discuss this as, as maybe, that we can, can, we have another presentation.
Oh, yeah, totally, absolutely.
But we could come back and finally, we can do it here in open forum, but we have another presenter tonight that I don't want to hold up too long, um, but if there's immediate questions, we can do that as well.
Can we rule out the idea of the competition? Do we all feel comfortable that we want to proceed for, forward with just one firm? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we'll discuss further tonight.
Can we let Dan go?
I don't know about this all, but, you know, I'll call and I'll hold, that's like. Okay, I'll sit right.
Dan, I'll get you, I'll call yourself, we need you.
Sure you're dismissing me, is what I'm saying?
I am dismissing, you are welcome to stay for this one.
For now.
But we'll call you if we need you, how's that sound?
I have no problem, I, by my computer, I can do it. I'll sit right.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you all for the discussion. Our next presentation is Ms. Tara Gross, she will be discussing our V3 Academy.
Hey, I just want to preface this, thank you Tara for coming, she's done a fantastic job as our V3 coordinator. Um, she, uh, over the summer, there was discussion about going to the IU with the V3. Um, Mr. Corby, Mr. Corby wasn't comfortable making that decision and was waiting until I arrived. The, the problem that occurred was that once I arrived in October, the only way to transition to the IU at that time was to basically tell our families that they were going to withdraw you from those courses and, and enroll you in new courses of a similar type, similar name, similar, uh, material. However, they would have had to take a placement test to determine where they were in that course, didn't feel that with their families, and therefore decided to put that on the back burner to gather more information, uh, and for a potential switch over this summer. Um, while Tara was investigating that, she came across a third option, which, which we do believe is a good option, but she's gonna present all three options to us tonight.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm gonna talk about, the focus is going to be on how we can enhance, um, and up, update our virtual academy from what we are currently using. So we have three options. Our first option would be to continue using our platform that we have now, which is Schoology. Um, it's teacher-created courses that our teachers here at the district have created. Our second option is we can partner with the IU, um, and join our virtual consortium and implement a new digital curriculum, um, and the one curriculum that we're looking at would be Accelerate Education. And the third option is we could partner directly with the third-party, um, content provider and implement their digital curriculum, which would still be Accelerate Education. There's benefits and obstacles to all three options. Option one, we have multiple benefits. Our teachers and our students are experienced with Schoology, there would not be any necessary trainings, um, or updates needed as far as their ability to log on to the platform and interact with it. Since our teachers created all of the digital curriculum that we have right now, we would not be paying any additional fees, because we already have the content that we're using. And we actually have an open enrollment procedure right now, so students can enroll anytime throughout the year. Um, it doesn't have to be at the end of a quarter, at the beginning of a semester, it can be like a rolling enrollment. Some obstacles that we have with our current practices, we have limited course options and electives. Currently, we only offer twenty-nine core, um, content courses, and that's combined between the middle school and high school. And we have eleven different electives that we also offer. And we currently are not offering, um, electives to our middle school students. We would need to overhaul our content of the courses, we would need to update them with PA Common Core, make sure that they're up to par, um, make sure that the content, um, is standards-based. And make sure that we fix any, um, resources that are actually on there and make them as current as well. Another big obstacle is we really don't have a lot of motivation to bring back kids from the public cyber charter schools that are currently our district kids involved in their programs. And most of our classes, we need to make additional accommodations and modifications to the course for all different learning modalities, and, and that's something that we would also have to redo if we would stay with option one. Now, option two and three are very similar, because they're going to be implementing the same digital curriculum and content, um, so they have joint benefits and they also have some obstacles. So, some benefits would be that there is a wide variety of course options. If we would go with Accelerate Education, they offer sixty-one core course options. They offer twenty-seven options of, um, AP courses and honors courses, and they also offer fifty-two electives, so that's a big jump. They, in addition, offer career electives, which allows our high school students to better explore their interest in different careers prior to graduation. It increases our ability to hit every learning modality that they have. So, if a student needs different modifications or accommodations to a course, there are preset accommodations that can be implemented, um, and they automatically do it for each individualized student. As far as worrying about content changing or being aligned to the standards with this digital curriculum, it actually updates automatically, so if there's something that changes to the standards of course, um, it would update, we wouldn't have to go in and make those adjustments, uh, yearly. They also provide twenty-four-seven tech support, so the students being at home, if they had a problem with accessing something online or, um, something not opening or any technical issues, there is going to be a twenty-four-seven access for them to contact, so that they are not limited to just schooltime hours for assistance. They also offer personalized weekly reports that get sent out to all parents, um, and students, so that there's more of a communication on a regular basis, um, of where the students are and how they're doing in their classes. This is, this is a big thing, this Accelerate Education is actually one of the digital curriculums that our cyber charter schools are offering around the area. So if we would offer this program, it would also allow us to bring back or recruit or recover some of those students, which could really cause a savings for our district in the long run. It still has opportunities to provide direct in, instruction, um, our teachers would still be able to teach those classes, kids would still be able to have the relationships with their teachers that are here, and they would still be able to come in for tutoring or, um, one-to-one instruction. Right now, we use it as a blended program for our CTC students and our co-op students, that's definitely still an option by using this program. And we have the ability to use our district teachers for, for teaching, and if there is a course that we don't have a teacher certified for, Accelerate Education actually provides teachers that are certified in different areas. Some of the obstacles that we would incur, teachers, administrators, parents, students, we would all need training, like initial training for that first year, um, on the new platform and how to interact. We would, it would cause our guidance department to have a little bit more of a strain, because right now, they would have to upload all new courses, um, in the system for course choices, and they already started meeting with some V3 students to pick courses for next year, so it would cause us to have to revamp that and have them come back in and show them the different possibilities and options that they would have if we would go with a new program. We would need to look at all of our teacher certifications and make sure that we analyze that and compare that to what courses are being offered through the content provider, so that we can see what our teachers will be able to teach and what we would need accelerate teachers for. And in that case, we would do like more of a survey of students' interests in different, um, different, um... Yep, there you go, electives, sorry about that, in different electives, um, and that way, if there is a high interest in electives of a specific course, that we could use accelerate teachers, um, for, for that program. And of course, we would need to come up with a recruiting plan, a method of marketing, how we can get our students back here to the district. Um, and that would need to be done through flyers, calls to, uh, different students that are at these private charter schools, also make one-to-one contact, and, and have some, um, open houses where we could show them that they're, you're providing the same thing that they would be getting if they would be going to their cyber charter.